The first item of business on our agenda is the resuscitation of the vision statement. And our vision statement is every school will be a thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community ready. Next on our agenda is a recognition resolution, which I will be reading. And the resolution recognizes the Spring Harbor Middle School teammates who won first prize in the 24th Annual 2018 African American History Challenge Bowl National Championship in Hollywood, Florida on June 16, 2018, hosted by 100 black men of America. So the resolution reads, "Whereas three Spring Harbor Middle School teammates vigorously prepared for several months and won first place in the 24th Annual 2018 African American History Challenge Bowl National Championship in Hollywood, Florida on June 16, 2018, hosted by 100 black men of America. Whereas the African American History Challenge Bowl is an educational competition designed to encourage middle school students to study African American history, personal contributions and sacrifices, and develop a more wholesome compassion for black excellence and pride that helps to foster a greater appreciation for the African American experience. Whereas the Spring Harbor team embodies and exemplifies the 100 black men of Madison's visions and goals by competing in and winning the national championship that further encourages peers and the Madison community to learn about and strengthen relationships with African American communities. Whereas the members of the 2018 Spring Harbor team are Paul Eichhoff, Simon Kellum, and Genesis Woodarts, coached by 8th grade social studies teacher Sarah Luthold. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education recognizes and congratulates the African American History Challenge Bowl National Champions for their outstanding accomplishments and for representing their peers, their families, their school, and our district. Be it further resolved, this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education minutes for the meeting of September 24, 2018." Round of applause, congratulations. Okay, so the next item on the agenda are public appearances, and we have quite a few public appearances this evening. We want to thank you all for coming to speak to us tonight. Speakers are welcome to speak on any topic at the regular board meeting, but we would like the speakers and the audience to know that board action and conversation is limited to the items on our agenda, which means members will not be able to engage in conversations with our speakers. We take your comments into account in our decision making and will follow up with you where appropriate. Speakers who require language interpretation, support in order to speak to the board shall be given up to six minutes to speak, which shall generally provide sufficient time for the interpreter to convey the speaker's message. Individuals with disabilities who require accommodations in order to register and speak to the board shall be granted such accommodation upon request. All other extensions may be granted only by the approval of the board. So once again, thank you for participating in our meeting tonight. I think we do have 35 speakers, so each speaker is allotted up to three minutes. I would really ask that everyone be respectful in their behaviors and their language and in listening to others as they speak, and respectful of the three-minute timing. We do have it in front of you, so I know it's been difficult in the past to know when those minutes are coming up, so hopefully this is an additional tool. So with that, we'll get started. I would ask that I'll name the speaker up and then the next person. I'd ask that the second speaker come and get ready while the first speaker is speaking. So our first speaker is Greg Murray, followed by Jennifer Bastian. Greg?
Good evening. My name is Greg Murray. I'm a parent of two children at La Follette High School, and I'm here on behalf of the La Follette High School Booster Club. As you know, last year at La Follette, we had a number of fights and incidents at our school, and we also had a gun incident at our school last year. As you also know, we've had a high turnover rate in staff at the beginning of the year over the summer, returned over most of our assistant principals, and had significant scheduling issues. Needless to say, we have a lot of disgruntled parents. Now, a few weeks in, we've had another significant gun issue at the high school last week. We want the board to know that we are still very concerned, we as parents are very engaged, and we're willing to help. But we need the board and the administration to take action and lead on these issues to keep all kids safe at the school. We know several of the board members are doing great work and are engaged on these issues, but we need to keep all of these issues at the top of the list for the administration. We as parents will continue to be a presence at these meetings until these issues are fully addressed and resolved. Finally, I want to address the communication with La Follette parents relating to this last gun incident. Minimizing these events by stating that they merely occurred close to the school grounds, or that we should feel fortunate because they didn't happen in the school building, is ridiculous. No parent I've talked to agrees with this characterization. When the gun goes off and the two kids are shot on a bus filled with school kids on a school route 100 feet from the door of the school, guess what? The incident happened at school. We need to recognize that. Mischaracterizing events in this way is seriously tone deaf and makes it seem like the administration is minimizing these events and parent concerns for PR. We need action. This is not a more hugs moment. Safety remains an acute issue at La Follette, and we need action. Parents will help, but we need concrete leadership. We can do better. Please communicate better. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, Jennifer, followed by Meg Goss.
Hi, I only have a couple of things to say today. Coming to the last meeting on August 27 was really an eye-opening experience. To see that the concerns of older white folks were definitely prioritized over the concerns of young children of color was very appalling. As a person who owns a small business that focuses often on youth, and as a person who's going to be a parent soon, I would just like to register my request and demand that you take EROs out of schools. It is more important to me that children of color feel safe than a man who feels comfortable filming them in public places and putting them on the internet. I don't have anything else to say, except that I hope you will consider the children's safety over adults.
Thank you. Meg, followed by Jennifer Rosenheinz.
Good evening. My name is Meg Goss, and I'm a La Follette High School parent. To demonstrate the urgency of preventing gun violence at La Follette, I'd like to go on record with the recent chronological history of gun possession on school grounds by La Follette students. This information can be easily verified in news articles on Madison.com. September 2010, La Follette student arrested for felony possession of a firearm in a school zone. March 2014, real-looking gun, a BB gun, found in a La Follette student backpack. April 2015, three students at Madison La Follette arrested for bringing a firearm onto school grounds and for handling the gun while at school. May 2016, La Follette student loaded bullets into a magazine of a handgun during class. May 2017, several students arrested after an altercation led to a fake gun being drawn inside La Follette High School. January 2018, two La Follette students found with BB guns. February 2018, La Follette student brings loaded handgun to school. September 2018, loaded handgun inside La Follette brought by another MMSD student. Two La Follette students injured by bullet when gun accidentally discharges on a bus full of La Follette and Senate students going home for the day. This is not some vague emerging threat in the larger community. It is our school, and these are not isolated incidents. Rather, they are clearly becoming a consistent and dangerous pattern. And what will it take for you to finally take decisive and effective action? Will it take the death of my daughter, or one of our students or staff members, and not just a shot in the leg? We need swift decisive action and leadership, not touchy-feely words. If you can't do it, then please step aside and bring in someone who can. Thank you.
Jennifer, followed by Samara Saferic.
Good evening, and thank you for taking a few short minutes to listen. My name is Jennifer Rosenheinz, and I am the statewide trainer for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, a nonpartisan grassroots organization committed to reducing gun violence and advocating for gun sense legislation while still respecting the Second Amendment. First of all, I would like to thank the board for the work it has done in the past to advocate on behalf of the students, staff, and teachers at MMSD for gun safety legislation in the state. I realize it's not always a popular decision to stand up and demand a change to the status quo, but I appreciate that the board has done so and continues to see school safety as only one piece of the puzzle of keeping our kids and communities safer. To that end, and with the purpose of moving forward in a way that truly helps the district tackle gun violence issues which affect children and other stakeholders, I'm here today with Samara Saferic, another Moms Demand Advocate, and on behalf of the organization to suggest a way forward which will bring together the groundwork the district has done and look at the problem holistically. Samara will speak in just a moment about Moms Demand Action's Be Smart program, which we are proposing the district implement in every school. Samara will speak more in depth about the program and why we believe it is an important piece in preventing gun violence. I would particularly like to call out two other elements of recent board and MMSD plans and add some context based on the latest thinking about school safety. To date, there have been at least 62 incidents in the U.S. of gunfire on school grounds in 2018. Gunfire on school grounds disproportionately affects children of color and in many ways mirrors trends in gun violence overall. With upcoming discussions about the recommendations of the ERO ad hoc committee and budget expenditures slated to harden our schools as targets, I would like to point out that research at this point is actually pretty clear. Items such as metal detectors, clear backpacks, dogs, armed security in the hallways, bulletproof glass, and other reactive measures cannot solve a complex problem. They may give the outward appearance of greater safety, but do not address the fact that far too many kids have easy access to unsecured firearms in their homes, and that schools and teachers do not have sufficient staffing levels to be able to address possible threats. What we need is a proactive approach to preventing gun violence. In addition to urging the school board to consider the risks and benefits of the specific role EROs play in schools in terms of climate and possible inhibition of potential threats, I also urge the board to take a really hard look, one by one, at the proven effectiveness of any particular safety countermeasure which is slated to be implemented this year. Oh, gosh. Not all measures are equally as effective, and in fact, some of the most effective countermeasures are including gun violence prevention in schools, health curricula, and implementing a program like Be Smart to help parents become a part of gun violence prevention in our schools and communities. I will submit these comments in email form along with links. Thank you.
Samara, followed by Amy DeGraff-Castro.
Hi, Samara Saferic, how are you? Thank you for your time tonight. I'm the parent of two children in public schools, and I began the Madison chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America almost three years ago. Shortly after I started, I stood right here at this podium, and I took my minutes to talk to you about Be Smart. I talked to you about reducing suicides and the number of unintentional shootings that happen when children get a hold of unsecured firearms. I offered to talk to PTOs, to the district, to present for teacher in services, and to parent groups, and I've done a lot of that on my own and with other group members that we've had. Three years later now, we need to revisit this conversation in a more concrete way. It's time for adults to step up and take responsibility to keep kids safe from guns. It's time for more education. So every year, nearly 300 children aged 17 and under get access to a gun and unintentionally shoot themselves or somebody else, 300, and nearly 500 more die by suicide with a gun under 17. Many of these are entirely preventable. Be Smart is a program that was created by Moms Demand Action, and it's designed to educate people about securing guns in homes and vehicles, about being brave enough to ask about guns, to have conversations with each other, our peers, and with our children, about recognizing risks of teen suicide, and about talking to peers about safe gun storage. I am not naive, and I don't pretend that this Be Smart program is going to solve all the problems of our youth by any stretch of the imagination. There's so much to do to repair trust among communities, to keep all families safe, to offer a support system and an alternative to violence for young men, especially men of color, and to not fail our low-income families struggling with day-to-day instability under impossible circumstances. We're talking tonight about so many things, and this is a simple way to start the conversation. We have Code Red drills. We talk about arming teachers. We're talking tonight about EROs. Let's also, as a district, talk to parents and children about guns, about the actual power that they wield and the consequences that they demand when it's fired. Let's make it real. The fault is in us as adults if we allow a child to have access to a gun. I would like to see Be Smart implemented across every school. I'd like to see it in health curriculum. I'd like to see realistic conversations. I want to see a flyer sent home at the beginning talking about safe storage. We can't vilify a child for carrying a gun. It is an adult responsibility to secure a gun, and that's the very least we can do. Send home a flyer. It is the least we can do to talk about keeping guns safe away from our children. Teenagers should not have guns, and it is our job as adults to make sure that happens.
Thank you. Amy, followed by Ashiana Alexandra.
Hi, I'm Amy. You guys know me, I've spoken in front of you before. When people ask me why I don't support police in schools, I don't say it's because it's common sense, even though it is. I don't dive into the horrifying data points, even though they exist. Many other people here tonight will explain those to you, like they have multiple times in the past. I don't talk about the school shootings that fear-mongering white supremacists bring to these meetings. I tell them I'm involved in the No Cops in Schools campaign because of the youth. Every month, these youths stand at this podium and share their most vulnerable stories, regardless of the fact that there is half a room full of people who hate them. They tell you their pains and fears as students in this school district, even though this board clearly does not care what they have to say. They put everything on the line to come here to testify their experiences, only to be belittled by adult men in this crowd and on this stage. In July, I stood four feet from a woman who dropped her cellphone and proceeded to accuse a young person of knocking it out of her hand, then assaulted this young person. Your committee did not care. They made sure this 50-year-old white woman who attacked a young person was okay, but did not check on this young person. In fact, when questioned by Freedom, Inc. members, Dean Loomos just shrugged and moved on. This verified to me that you, school board members, do not care about the youth. You do not care about any of them. You care about protecting this status quo. You were not elected to do that. You were elected to represent, you were not elected to represent me, or David Blasko, or even yourself. You were elected to represent the youth, black youth, Southeast Asian youth, queer youth, disabled youth. These youths are telling you now that they are in danger in your school district, and you are shrugging them off. Schools in Oakland, Denver, and Baltimore replaced detention with meditation and yoga and restorative justice, and it works. There have been little to no suspensions in those communities, even though they supposedly have higher crime rates than Madison. These youth, in just a few short years, in this crowd, they will be able to vote, they will be community members, they will be teachers, organizers, leaders in this community, and will decide who on this board stays and who deliberately, and they will decide who on this board stays and remember who deliberately put them in danger. They will remember the I-rolls, and they will remember the not paying attention. They will remember the board who shrugged off their fears. Stand on the right side of history. Prove me wrong and show me that you care. Freedom, Inc. demands three things: take cops out of schools, invest the money in these youth, and give the community control of the discipline. That means parents and teachers, not police officers. Thank you.
Ashiana, followed by Arika Moore.
My name is Adriana, and I'm a youth leader at Freedom, Inc. You can't claim you care about black excellence and still have police in schools. School police don't even care about black youth education. They don't protect us black youth. They don't make schools better or safer. They harass students of color and treat us like criminals while we are trying to learn. They beat up on us just because they have the power. In 2014, in Georgia, a video camera caught a school police officer tackle a student and body slammed the student to the ground and started punching him over and over again in the face. The student was left with two broken bones. This is why we are demanding that you want to take police out of schools, they don't protect us and keep us safe from violence. They be the ones doing the violence, too. Give that money to us, not the police. We need better school supplies, bus passes, and healthy school lunches. Three, let parents, youth, and community have control over school safety. To me, school safety looks like teachers that care about me in college, programs in sex education, not arresting black kids who need help and not racist cops who tell us that we are bad kids. I am a good kid. I am smart and confident. I know what you, I know what you need. I know that you need to know it, too, and you need to treat us better.
Arika Moore, followed by Amy Comede.
My name is Erica, and I'm a youth organizer at Freedom, Inc. Police do not protect everybody in schools. They only protect why is they don't do their jobs right. They just sit up and watch us kids get treated wrong. And in case y'all didn't know, school police do not stop school shootings, so what is the point of having them there? It seems like y'all are just having them there to hurt us black kids. They harm us in any way possible. They treat us white kids, I mean, they treat white kids like they don't do nothing wrong. They do unnecessary stuff like tasing kids or shooting them. In Texas, a school police officer got caught hurting kids three separate times. He put arm lock bar on a kindergartner, put a 12-year-old student in a chokehold, and slammed a 15-year-old student on the ground over and over. This is why you need to take cops out of school, invest money into youth of color, not police, and give us control over school safety.
Thank you. Amy, followed by Bianca Gomez.
My name is Amy, and I'm a youth organizer from Freedom, Inc. School police don't help us with things that we actually need help with. They don't protect us or keep us safe. They don't stop gun violence. What they actually do is arrest youth for the littlest things, hurt kids of color and treat white kids better than us. Marsh of Pitts, a 50-years-old special needs student, was beat by a school police officer for not tucking in his shirt. The officer slammed him on the The officer slammed him on the locker, pinned him on the floor, and broke his nose. We are not criminals. We do not deserve to be treated like this. And we are not... We are sick of police hurting us. This is why we are demanding you to take police out of school, put money into youth of color, not the police, and let us tell you what safety looks like.
Thank you. Bianca Gomez, followed by Savang Chaborn.
We need interventions that disrupt and prevent harm, not interventions that reinforce harm, like police. We need support staff that understand youth development, not police that criminalize children and their families. We need restorative justice that's true to its roots and true to its principles, not this like white liberal restorative justice y'all got going on in these high schools. We need restorative justice that's... We don't need restorative justice that's an alternative form of punishment, because that's not what it is. We need teachers and counselors and mental health professionals, not police, that perpetuate violence and prey on black and brown youth, both in schools and in their communities. We need safety, not more violence. And you get to choose how you're going to respond to what has been going on in the city. You get to choose to be punitive and anti-black, which is what y'all have been doing, or you get to choose to be on the right side of history. You get to choose the youth. You get to choose to support the youth and give them the resources that they need to live healthy and happy lives. I know there's a lot of fear from folks in the community, especially around guns, and I'm a former teacher, so I understand that fear. But that fear is irrational when you compare it to the hundreds of black and brown students that have been harmed by educational resource offices in schools. School EROs have not stopped a school shooting since Columbine, but have funneled millions and millions of black and brown children into the school-to-prison pipeline since the '90s. So you clap, y'all. It's time to stop the cycle of abuse and harm and invest into things that prioritize students' health and well-being. Invest in leadership development. Invest in comprehensive sex education. Invest in healthcare and college programs, not police. So you get to choose what side of history you're going to be on. Do you want to be on the side of your white supremacist forefathers and foremothers who initially put police in schools in the '40s and '50s because schools were integrated and they had some irrational fear of black and brown children? Or do you want to be on the side of morality and righteousness? So you get to choose that. We will remember what you choose and hold you accountable accordingly. So you need to do better by these kids. I don't want to see no more police in schools as a result of this shooting that happened this over the weekend. I don't want to see no more punitive anti-black policies. I don't want to hear no racially coded language about needing to keep our little precious white kids safe. You have to think about our youth, too, and our youth are a priority.
Savang, followed by Sonia Worthy.
Good afternoon. Wait, it's evening already. I'm getting my days mixed up. It's been an emotional weekend. The traumas that our communities facing, the Hispanics, Latino, the Cambodian communities, and the Maung communities. ICE came, took our people. The trauma that is affecting us as a community. Seventy percent of Cambodian people have PTSD. And this weekend triggered again. We are walking every day, dreaming, visioning, seeing the horror of a brutal of what it's like to be abused, to not being wanted. We are all human. These students here, they've been coming here to speak to you about their experience. You know, life, without experience, we're nothing. And with those experiences, what shape us and make us. I came from a country that was bombed forty years ago, and it's because of the United States, the Second War. That's what brought me here. I don't want to be here. I'd rather be back in my country, where there's no police. You know, when there's something happen at home, do you call the police first? No. You talk to your children. You talk to your husband and your wife. You bring in your aunt and your uncles. And this is what we want. Please consider, each one of you has the power to make the decision what it feels like to have a safe school. Take police out of school. Invest money in the youth and have us... And have the community. Give the community to have that control over safety. And you know what? Gun does not walk into somebody's hands. It's up here. Those who need help with mental health, and that's what we need. Gun does not walk, does not have feet. Think about that.
Sonia Worthy, followed by Bob Schaefer.
First, I just want to thank Savang so much for your words. Thank you so, so much. My name's Sonia Worthy, and I'm a mental health social worker in Madison, and I want to say first and foremost that I'm strongly against the police being in our youth schools. The police, as an institution, has terrorized communities of color for decades and continues to this day. So as we continue to learn how, as Savang was saying, generational trauma affects our young people, we need to look at how just the mere presence of the police can create a trauma response in our youth, in our youth of color, in our queer youth, not to mention, I mean, just the reality beyond just the presence of them, the reality that black students are nearly 22 times more likely to be arrested than white students, according to an MMSD report in 2015. I also kind of wanted to address some of the concern parents who are coming out after the very terrifying example of gun violence that happened in Madison recently with a student accidentally discharging a handgun on a bus and a student loading a gun in a classroom. And while these examples are horrifying, one obvious fact, I don't know, really stuck out to me, was that the cops were there, and nothing was done to deter those things, right? We know that cops aren't going to prevent these instances. So you've heard over the weeks, like, an abundance of data that confirms this, like, the mere presence or absence of cops does nothing to deter students from bringing guns to schools. On a national level, local level, cops don't deter these students from bringing guns. So in line with the testimony that you heard from every town and Moms Demand Action, we ask that you look at the data and refuse to be swayed by fear-mongering scare tactics, because it's really scary, and I think we all want a solution to this, but I personally want one that works and doesn't just make us feel better for having done something, even if it's not effective, right? So I ask that you reinvest the $360,000, $3600,000, not into the school, the prison pipeline, but back into youth of color and into POC counselors and social workers who can do healing work with our youth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bob Schaefer, followed by Stefah Valeditsky.
Thank you for this opportunity. Since some of the concerns in the report pertain to the educational role of the officer, I suggest changing the title to School Resource Officer, as used in many other districts. Opportunities need to exist for students and staff to informally interact with the officer and develop more healthy, respectful, and caring relationships. As people get to know each other, more respect and trust can develop. I believe that it is incorrect to assume that all people of the same racial or ethnic background face the same unique challenges and life experiences or the same concerns. I believe that it is important to recognize the strengths and challenges of each individual and utilize those strengths to help overcome the challenges around us. This is what helps build vibrant, caring communities. Making mistakes is part of our growth, and it is to be expected, especially of this age group, as they mature into becoming adults. Some mistakes can be criminal in nature, but may not have caused great harm. Restorative justice, when administered effectively, may help some individuals become good, solid members of our community and ought to be seriously considered as opposed to automatically putting students in the criminal justice system, which has the potential of negatively affecting not only their lives, but also the lives of others in the community. MMSD security staff need to be the first involved to handle school-related issues, and a defined policy needs to be in place for when an officer is called upon. The primary role and need for an officer in the school is to act as the first line of defense to protect students and staff from acts of violence, either internal or external. The ideal would be that such threats would not exist, and a school officer would not be needed. Considering the wide range of challenges high school students present, it is reasonable to expect that an officer assigned to a school be trained and prepared to deal with situations related to this age group, which include bullying, depression, low self-esteem, mental health issues, and gang involvement, to name a few. I agree that the current practice of reassigning officers on a timely basis could have a negative effect on the students. If this is required, I recommend that an overlap period of officers at the beginning or end of the school year be considered. This would give officers an opportunity to familiarize and the incoming officer with the students and the environment. It would also allow an opportunity for the students to adjust to the new officer while familiar officer is present. Something of the same nature may also be needed in case the currently assigned officer is unavailable. Any future committee needs to also include a principal, a current teacher, a current student council representative from each school, and a parent of a current student, since these are representative of those whose lives are most affected. Concerns have been expressed that the $360,000 cost ought to be spent on students, calculating the number of students and the number of school days, and amounts to less than 30 cents per day, school per day.
Thank you. Stefah, followed by Julia Levine.
I want to start off by appreciating these meetings and the space that we have here. I think it's really obvious that these meetings have brought together a really powerful community and that they've opened up some really essential conversations for us to be happening. And I think that what we're seeing here is the unpacking of some very old wounds. And so I just want to name that that's a really important and heavy process that, for better or for worse, we are now, that we're now embarking on. And with that side of building civic momentum and citizen participation is kind of your final goal here, then you've succeeded. But if you're wanting to take a step towards healing this crisis, which is rooted in centuries of state-sanctioned violence against black and brown communities, then allowing cops into schools is the wrong move. I also want to just, like, slow it down and acknowledge the trauma load in this room. People are coming in with some really horrific stories, and I think it can be really easy for us to hear it really fast and to not really feel it and not feel how it lands, right? So, yeah, just want to take a moment, because I have almost two minutes, so, yeah, let's take a moment for that. Yeah, and so maybe being able to have a process that moves at the pace of people's trauma, right? And that's not a process that seeks to instantaneously bring in 20 police liaisons to the schools. It's a process that actually allows for some community deliberation, because I believe that that kind of community deliberative process can be an act of healing and can be a move towards recovering some of what we would like to have in the school system, which is a space for young people to come into their own, to be able to learn about their interests, to be able to get in touch with their strengths, as you've seen from the testimonies that we've heard here from the youth today. Unfortunately, that can't happen if young folks are in a state of shutdown, right? It can't happen if they're watching their backs. It can't happen if they're flinching. And it can't happen if they're reliving their trauma or getting re-triggered over and over again. So I want to, again, acknowledge that we're in a room with a significant trauma load, not just because of the histories of police violence, but also because of the ongoing ICE raids that are happening in our community. Students are waking up really terrified, and they're going to bed very terrified. And I think this is a really momentous opportunity for us to make some hard calls. So you're obviously at a crossroads here, but I believe that you have everything you need to do. You need to make the right decision. The experiences and testimonies of the youth of color who are very bravely sharing, the slew of statistics and case studies of alternatives, and, most importantly, your humanity. I encourage you to draw on that last part as you make your decision.
Thank you. Julia, followed by Elizabeth Bruno.
I was here last month, so you may remember me. I'm a West alum. While listening to a WRT interview with TJ Mertz last month, I heard a discouraging intro by the host that the ad hoc EROs committee's work was being interrupted by these major disruptions. I think that's us. Is that what we are? I mean, I've done a bit of research on each of you in an attempt to convince you of the importance of this work. There are so few forms to offer to the public to talk about how police operate in Madison and that don't involve direct cooperation with the police. This is a public forum, and though you may consider it a disruption, it's our right and directive to speak. Mary Burke, your work with Building Brave has stated as to create a global community of women to connect, inspire, and empower each other. One way to empower the young, confident women speaking here tonight is to honor their words and empower them to feel safe and confident in expressing themselves fully in school without fear of reprimand. Dean Luhmos, as a tireless advocate for homeless folks in Dane County, you probably recognize that sometimes the right way to fix a system is not always legal or approved by normative social structures. Kate Towes, you have stated your experience with peer mediation as an effective way to settle disputes. Do you think this can be a full-fledged program at MMSD? Do you think there is a way for a mediator to operate like a police officer through mediation but without a gun? James Howard, you advocate for more minority role models in school. How about replacing cops with mentors of color? Nikki Vandermealy, you've been an advocate for peer mentors and other mentors throughout your campaign and your time on the board. Will you continue to advocate for this? Will you be willing to meet with folks at schools to discuss this? TJ Mertz, you say no students should be criminalized for simply disruptive behavior in schools, but this is what students here are telling you is happening to them. Gloria Reyes, you say you want strong community partnerships. This is an opportunity to create that. Right now, as we speak, as Savang and others have beautifully said, there are people in our community under threat by federal agents, attempting to deport and tear apart families. And they can't call the police in this moment of terror, because the police are not trustworthy in protecting vulnerable families and communities in our... Yeah. So there are students in your district who, this week, have been directly under threat and recognize that the police cannot protect them, and they're waking up and going to school like that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Bruno, followed by Paisley.
I'm Elizabeth Bruno, and I'm actually standing here wondering, like, what more could possibly be said? I'm here to oppose police in schools and to support Freedom, Inc. in saying no police in schools, redirecting resources to youth of color and community control of safety. And, yeah, I'm just left wondering, like, you have all the statistics. We know what's happening on a national scale. We know the statistics that are happening in Dane County and in Madison. And then we're here witnessing stories of youth of color in the schools here in Madison, and, like, what is it going to actually take to let that in and recognize that a change is actually necessary, right? Like, the cops, you know, there have been police in schools, and their violence continues. Like, the cops, you know, there have been police in schools, and their violence continues. So like, something, something different is needed in this moment. And actually, we know that the police in schools, as people have mentioned, are perpetuating trauma. This comes, is a historical legacy, right? So I appreciate the person asking us to take a moment, because I'm like, what is actually happening, like, especially in the white body, that doesn't let us feel and doesn't let us acknowledge? And it all, it all stays in the head, and we can like, rationalize and compartmentalize. But I think this is actually a moment to like, drop in and be like, this is a real issue, and how do I bring more of my own humanity into the conversation and actually hear more of the story that's happening? So I'm just gonna end and say, like, no, no police in schools. Like, we need to make a different choice.
Thank you. Paisley, followed by, I don't know the pronunciation of the name, L Y U, it's a first name, J A X Y R. That's the second speaker. Go ahead.
All right. You've heard lots of statistics. I'm gonna tell a little story. So I have a friend who had a mental breakdown. Actually, he was running through traffic on John Nolan, and the cops came. My friend actually spit on the police and punched one in the face, and that was the last thing that he remembered doing before he woke up. Actually, in the hospital, completely unscathed, brought there for mental health reasons, next to his mom. So that's what happened to him after assaulting the police. I know someone else who had a mental breakdown, who ran through traffic. He didn't even come close to any officer. And in fact, he was inside of his friend's home when he was shot and killed by the police. And that was Tony. So if you acknowledge the racial bias here as existent, as the harmful murderous thing that it is, you would know why students of color are not safe in a school where police have a constant presence. The cops make calls like this in life or death situations. They make calls like this when it comes to criminalization. I don't think anybody deserves the lifelong label of criminalization. It's a very sticky label. And especially, no young person deserves this label. And every young person in the MMSD schools is at higher risk of receiving this label if the cops are present in the schools. We need to invest the money, not in the cops, but in youth of color and services that actually uplift the youth. Thank you.
The second, excuse me, the second speaker will be Kayla Herr. And I'm sorry, I couldn't pronounce your name. Do you want to tell the audience?
It's Liv. My name's Liv.
Okay, thank you.
I need to just take a second for my own trauma load, and, and just say, if it wasn't clear that the first person in that story was white, the second person in that story is black, and that is the distinction. I'm gonna kind of follow suit with what Julia did and ask you some questions. And I do want to just say to you that it's within your power to answer according to school board meeting laws. It's up to the discretion of the chair, so any of you can answer, as long as Mary isn't shushing you. So I'd really like that. First, can we do a little like, group check-in about how you all feel about the three demands listed by Freedom, Inc. Youth? We can do like, a thumbs up for "I'm ready to support," thumbs down is "I'm not ready to support," and then this would be like, somewhere in the middle. So if anyone's willing to just put your thumb up and kind of let us know where you're at. Mary, my first question is for you. In March of this year, you were quoted in Madison Commons, saying, "We have made a lot of progress toward better reading and math scores for low-income and African-American students over the last five years, but we have a long way to go to build on what works and always have at the forefront, a focus on our students and how we meet those needs." So first of all, I want to push back on test score improvement being progress, and I wish we could focus on less authoritative and more humanizing goals, like, how do our Black students feel? Can we make our Black students feel better? And what are we learning from our Black students? But anyways, I'm glad you're so interested in making life better for and focusing on the needs of Black students. So my question is, how will you meet the needs of these Black and Brown students who need cops out of schools? You don't have to answer. I know your father founded Trek Bicycles, a company that takes in $900 million a year, so maybe you could just make a small donation of $1 million to fund these programs for Black and Brown youth? Or do you just not care that much? I have seven seconds, so I'm just gonna come back for the rest of you next month. I'll see you then. No cops in schools.
Kayla Herr, followed by Shira.
I just came from a press conference, because a whole community was in disarray because ICE was here and intimidating the whole community. And I wonder, as a refugee child and as an immigrant child, and I wonder, my mom is really scared. I had to tell my eight-year-old, if they come to the door, don't open it. I had to give them safety tips. And I went to this hearing, and the police was there, and leaders were there. And I said, "I wonder why they understand that ICE is an intruder in this community, but you all can't understand that the police is an intruder in schools?" So I thought about that, and I'm like, in the ways that ICE is terrorizing this community, I bet you the police are also terrorizing Black and Brown kids in schools. And I bet you that anxiety that we've been having since Friday is the same anxiety that kids have. The other thing that I want to tell you all is, I run a nonprofit in town. I feel like I'm a pretty decent citizen, but I can tell you, I was arrested in a school. I was arrested at Leopold Elementary School. And it was because of, my five-year-old was graduating, but they didn't have enough tickets. And they only had two tickets, and they, we had three parents. So when we got there, it was too late, and his dad wanted to see him walk across the stage. And at that time, there were police officers there, and he heard his kid's name, and he went in there anyway. And the police then was telling him to leave, and there was a confrontation, and I was trying to de-escalate. And I was trying to say, "Don't pull your taser out. There's a lot of children here." I ended up getting slammed to the floor and getting arrested at Leopold School. So no, there's no place for cops in schools. They don't belong there, period. I have four kids. I went through the Madison Public School District. I have two kids in the public school district now, and I had two kids who graduated already. And I can tell you that, as a parent, I don't want police in schools. I want those resources given to children, and I want, I want you all to make the right decision. And the last thing I'm gonna say is, that if you understand the terrorizing of immigrant communities, which many of you, I know, then you should know that police have no place in schools. And they're, they're terrorizing, maybe not your kids, because your kids may not look like us, but they're definitely terrorizing us. And so we want them out, and I hope that you all vote with your conscience and be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Shira, Shira, followed by Selena Yang.
We told you over and over again that cops make us feel unsafe. Yet again, you failed us. Not only did you keep the cops in schools, but you're suggesting to put 20 more in schools. Don't y'all get it? We told our stories over and over again, repeated the same things over and over again, because we care about our school system, that my brother, my sister, nieces and nephews will be in. Kids should not fear for their lives in schools, being schools better yet at all. When I was in high schools, high school, cops never made me feel safe, and never will I ever have a relationship with a ERO. I've been racially profiled many times for walking Black. I would never feel safe, I would never feel safe having cops in schools. We have three demands. The first one, the first one, we don't want cops in schools. We want to get them out of the school that y'all so-called, that y'all so-called call a safe place. The second one is invest into youth of color and not police. So the $360,000 that y'all are investing into the cops, invest it into Freedom, Inc., so we can train folks to understand what's going on. Lastly, community control over school safety. Let youth, let youth of color have control over restorative justice circle instead of suspending them and taking them away from schools. You are upholding white supremacy. By keeping them, by keeping them in schools, you all are doing the same thing that the white folks and the police were doing in the 40s. They only put police in schools so they can keep Black and Brown youth out of schools and away from the white people and make them feel uncomfortable. And that's exactly what you all are doing if you keep them in school. We do not want four cops. We do not want 20 cops. We do not want any cops. I would never see me, my peers, or my siblings having a relationship with a cops that train to shoot first and ask questions later.
Selena, Selena Yang, followed by Peyton Yang.
Okay, my name is Selena, and I'm a youth organizer at Freedom, Inc. So we don't need school that kills our history, our education, and our people. We don't need police that criminalize us and harm us. These cops are not educational resources. They do nothing that helps educate us, but harass Black people every single day. You target all Black people just because one person made a mistake, and that is racist. School never felt safe in the first place. But when cops are put in our school, in our schools, it feels even more unsafe for me to step a foot inside my school. And I shouldn't be feeling that way. I should feel safe to be who I truly am. Youth school member people shouldn't let students feel that way when you guys are in charge of our school system. If you truly care and are concerned about students, why invest in the cops? Why not invest in me instead? Cops are getting paid $360,000, while their low-income students have in trouble with bus cards, school supplies, healthy lunches, and programs that build us up and not tear us down. That's why students are always upset about coming to school, because of this messed-up system that you guys created. Why do you care about, who do you care more about, helping students or criminalizing students? If you truly care, invest in youth of color instead of cops that kills and harass. Almost every day at school, I hear my teachers calling the security just because a Black student isn't listening. But when a white student is being disrupted, my teachers never call the security on them. And every day, I always see a cop following a Black student around the school. You have to put, you have to put in work to make schools better for all students, not just white ones. So that's why I'm here today to demand my dignity. Take cops out of school. Let parents, youth, and community have control over school safety. Invest in youth of color, not cops.
Thank you. Peyton, Peyton Yang, followed by Mai Tao Yang.
I want you all to listen carefully, because I know you all seem to ignore us when we tell you our stories. We continue to show up because we value the lives of Black and Brown students and are demanding safe and healthy spaces for them. Cops are getting paid to harass and harm youth of color, especially Black folks. I am stressing this to you, and I want you all to have this word pop out when someone mentions cops, is that cops equals slave patrols. Cops equals slave patrols. Your modern-day police force was initially created to catch and punish Black people for trying to escape slavery. And now, instead of taking them to this plantation, they put them in cages, give them citations, and ruin young people's lives. And you support this by upholding the contract and giving money to the police to harm us. This makes you a selfish, disgusting, snobby, and white racist. Why is it that you invest in cops and not us? You want us to fail? If youth are important to you, do you ever think about your children, your siblings? You want safety, but have you ever thought about our safety when we are scared of these notorious corrupted cops? Have you ever thought about the trauma of war and violence from my people? Have you ever thought about the safety of Black folks whose ancestors were slaves to this very sacred land? Cops don't protect us. Cops don't make me feel at ease. They decrease my people and my wellness and my well-being. Cops don't educate us. Cops are the root cause of why white folks are easily passed when they are being violent. But I bet if there was a Black violent person causing harm, their life would be taken away with no second chance. They don't get second chances like their white peers. And I bet this is your first time being schooled by all these youth who actually have struggled through this white country. Also, my team, my, my team and I did a whole survey in our community versus you all surveying the school. And 94% said to raise money to increase youth leadership, and only 6% said cops in schools. You can see that this is what most of us want. We want to develop young youth leaders of color. So to really change this, listen to our people. Allow yourself to open up to our needs. We demand that, take cops out of schools, invest $360,000 into youth of color, and have students and community members to get to choose what they want to learn and have control over their own safety. We are the future. Let us lead the way.
Mai, Mai Tao Yang, followed by Pazang Tao.
I am here today to talk about the history of the police. We all know that police aren't here to protect us. Police was created to be slave catchers. They were there to catch Black and Brown slaves that escaped from their owners. Black and Brown kids are harassed from the police at school and even out on the streets. Having police in schools disrupts our way of learning. Safety doesn't exist if Black and Brown students are getting forced to interact with police that threaten them and not see them as students. The foundation that the police institution was built on was and continues to be racial profiling of Black and Brown people. There isn't a reasonable fact on how or why police need to be in schools. We have seen the police used force for minor offenses, like when we, as students, don't follow instructions. If we, as students, are here to learn, then why take our education away from us by taking us to jail for some dumb reasons, like fighting and cussing back at our teachers? We, as students, aren't here to do, to get harassed, arrested. We are here because we were taught that education was what we needed in life. Police don't belong in schools. They belong in prisons, and having police in schools is basically, basically turning schools into prisons. And having police in schools is basically turning schools into prisons. If you guys are okay with having cops in schools, then you all should be okay with this kids skipping class and not showing up to school. Think about your own kids, even if they are in or out of schools, you want them in schools with police? Wait, but hold up. In schools, wait, but hold up, I forgot that you all are the one that wanted cops in schools. So I bet that you guys don't even care about your own kids' safety. Y'all might decide on keeping cops in schools, but I'll continue to keep coming here so that my demands and what I want can stick into all your heads. Not just that, but when these words pop up, my image pop up into your mind. Before ending my testimony, let me share a quick story that I read because something really little led him or her to action scene. In Birmingham, Alabama, a black high school student was assaulted by a school resource officer for wearing a hat indoors. Instead of telling this kid to take off his hat, instead, the officer turned the kid to him, punched him in the head, and grabbed him and started choking him. This is not okay and this is not what you call safety. We demand for one, completely removing police from our four high schools. Second, create opportunities for students, families, and communities to have power to make real decisions about school. And finally, invest resources in education that promotes leadership, wellness, learning, and creativity for youth of color.
Pazang, Pazang Tao followed by Cynthia Yang.
Hi. Um, I go to Lafayette High School. I am sixteen years old. I'm here today because I don't want cops in my schools. There are multiple reasons why I don't want cops in my schools. I've seen that cops mostly target black students and people, students of color. They make us feel unsafe. I've seen my friends stopped by a cop because they were wearing a hoodie, a DM hoodie. I've seen cases where students were hurt because cops have mistaken them for the crimes they did not create. Many of us struggle to find food and transportation every day to school. Yet, some of us don't even have bus cards. So please invest in bus cards for all of your students, whether they have free reduced lunch or not. Please invest in bathrooms, better bathrooms, working sinks, working flushing stuff, yeah. Those bathrooms need to work. Please also invest in better school lunches. I know for a fact that many students have felt unwell because the food they have consumed at school. Why invest in people that traumatizes your student? Why invest in people that fail your students? Open your eyes and look at reality. If your students really matter to you, please listen to our voices. Thank you.
Cynthia Yang followed by Kua Yang.
Okay. So first off, I want to give Dean and TJ credit for adding like a few progressive things into the recommendations. Progressive is in quotations because real progressive values would consider students of color and our harmful interactions with police, which is backed by evidence, rather than the fear that white people have, which is rooted in white supremacy. I am a student, I attend West High School, and I've been telling y'all over a year now, almost two, um, that I do not want cops in school. I wake up at six thirty AM in the damn morning and spend eight hours in school learning about white people's violent, shady history. And I get discriminated because of my skin color and the fact that I can speak another language. I get stopped by the police because my clothing is considered suspicious because I'm not wearing skintight clothing and I'm bending the gender way too much when it comes to clothing. The police and security guards all target students of color, and students of color are the ones that are getting harassed by the police every day. Stop putting an actual, saying how y'all want to protect us because we know damn well y'all don't give a fuck about us. What you truly care about is protecting property and white people like y'all up there, of course. And getting ready to go to school, I'm always reminded of the harsh reality that the police don't, that the police don't do shit to protect me and that I have to be the one protecting myself. And I cannot, that of course, because I'm independent. But anyways, as students of color, we feel like the school is a battlefield. We don't feel safe because the cops are there patrolling our hallways. The cops do not belong in our schools. We students of color know how safety looks like for us because it's 2018, so of course we will know. It definitely does not involve having cops in schools. We want you all to take police out of school, put money to positive youth development for youth of color, and let students, parents, and community members have control over safety. Um, and we will continue to push greatness and you only have two options to either invest in youth of color or step down from your position up there as a school member. And I may not be able to vote yet, but I have many friends, family, and community members who can vote and are interested in my future. They can see the way that you all dismiss me and put me in harm, so y'all should be really do the right thing. And, um, I'm a junior, so like in 2020, I'm gonna graduate, so if I see any of y'all on stage, I'm not gonna shake your hands.
Kua followed by Hope Fang.
Hi, my name is Kua. I'm a gender justice coordinator at Freedom Inc., but I'm here today on my own accord to tell you why I want cops removed from schools. I am a mother of two young Southeast Asian boys who will be attending Madison schools, one of them having a learning disability. Growing up in a predominantly white high school myself, I saw that the most police interaction between students were those students of color. Minorities made less than three percent of the whole student population, yet they had the most interactions. After attending these meetings, I've learned that there's a common theme with police targeting black and brown students. As a mother, I am afraid for my two sons. I'm afraid cops will punish them because they cannot learn like they're expected to. I'm afraid they'll be punished for their difference. And I'm afraid they'll use their authority and weapons to discipline my sons. I'm afraid to send them to school every day in fear that they return harmed or worse, do not return at all. We have seen countless students and children harmed around the US, especially children with disabilities. However, there is no action for their safety. We still see cops in schools, we still see children harmed every day, and youth here are feeling unsafe in their own schools. Today, I ask you to use your power. You have the voice to make change. Use that power to protect these children. With your voice, you make a difference. Remove cops for the safety of our students and make schools a safe place to learn. Allow parents to choose what is appropriate discipline for their children and create opportunities for students, families, and communities to have power to make real decisions about their schools. Divest from cops and invest in education that promotes leadership, wellness, and creativity for youth of color. Hire counselors who look like the youth, who understand what hardships they go through and help them overcome them. Help protect these children as if they were your own. If they were yours, you would be the ones fighting and you'd be the one speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope Fang followed by Monker Dunwork.
Hello, my name is Hope Fang. I was born and raised in Stevens Point, Wisconsin. It's a small city with a small population of people of color. And I've been living in Madison for about five years now. Growing up in Stevens Point, I never questioned policies, laws, or rules. I was what some people would call a model minority, but that's a myth. There's no such thing as a model minority. It's a myth created to divide people of color. I attended UW-Madison and my world forever changed. My analysis around race, gender, institutions, and much more have changed. It's still changing. I've learned to question policies, laws, and rules, something I never did prior to college. As a high school student, I always knew I was treated differently by the cops in my middle school and high school. Yes, you heard that correctly, middle school and high school. In fact, all the people of color knew they were treated differently by not just the cops in schools, but the teachers and staff. We feel it, we live it, but no one believes us. So I never said anything because I never felt, ever felt that I had a voice as a non-white student. I feared that using my voice would be a waste of time because no one would hear me, let alone listen to what I had to say. I also didn't want to believe that I should question why the district, whose job is to help its constituents, had cops in its schools. But I'm here today in support of what the youth of color in Madison are doing to get the cops out of their schools. I admire their hard work. I'm here because my fear as a high school student is the reality for these youth of color. They're using their voices, yet they're not heard. In fact, it almost feels as if you're all mocking them by stealing their language and doing the exact opposite of what they've asked you. You're all smart people up there, at least that's what I'd like to believe. So start acting smart, start making smart choices, stop silencing the stories of youth of color. It's time you all did something different than your predecessors. Lead these youth of color, these queer and trans youth, these youth with disabilities, both visible and invisible, these black and brown youth, these youth who do not look like you, to a healthy education. And that starts with removing cops out of their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Monker followed by John Fang.
Hello. Can y'all hear me? Okay, cool. Because I really want to talk to us as a whole. Um, I'm here tonight to address some narratives that I feel have been floating around around this issue of having police in school. Um, and I'm gonna talk about what y'all's story is, um, what some of our white community member's stories are, what some of our white supremacist community member's stories are, and then what is our story, right? The rest of us who are sane and live in this world and experience these things that we've been talking to you about. Um, I want to talk about challenging those narratives and what we see as solutions, right? So the first narrative that I hear a lot around here is EROs are different from street cops. They're all the same. You cannot train a cop differently, whatever psychology, whatever you want to train them, they're gonna do the same thing that we're supposed to do and meant to do, which is police and control black behavior. Lock us up, kill us, don't give us a second chance, let us live in fear. And with this point, I want to address Gloria. Because I saw you today, we're all at the press conference about ICE detentions, and I saw how emotional and teary-eyed you were when people were talking about picking up Latinx folks, when ICE was coming in here, coming through the neighborhood, messing with us, all that girl was telling her story, I was crying too. Just like ICE ain't different from the regular police, regular police ain't different from EROs, they're all law enforcement. They're all terrifying us. The same terror that you felt, the same heartbreak that you felt, I want to believe you felt that because I did too. That's how we feel when we see police. We joke about it, we make light of it to get through our trauma, but you see a police, you run the other way. Just like you see an ICE agent, you run the other way, you run and hide in the attic like that girl and her family did. Right? That's how we feel. So that's the first narrative, right? Y'all are saying they're different, they're trained better, we should have relationships with them, right? Like we about to get married or something, we gotta foster, like, what? So that's the first narrative. They're all law enforcement. They don't need to be in our schools, they don't even need to be in our communities, to be honest, we got this. And then the second one about who all is against them, like y'all's story is that there's like these .83 little kids or whatever coming to the meetings, um, telling y'all that they're against them and only, it's only them, so why listen? That's the same thing the Nazis was probably talking about, it's just a few Jewish people, we should just kill them all, they're the only ones who don't like us, right? That's messed up, that's fascist thinking. And y'all are supposed to be progressives. I knock doors for a living in this community, I do civic engagement work, and I know that people are horrified when they find out that police are in schools, not just these kids up here. So to close, I'll say that like the third narrative is like the solution. Y'all think we need to have these dead-end meetings, protect some white supremacists, and add twenty more cops? No. Our story is that we don't need no more cops in schools. We need to invest in these youth of color so that they go to school and learn and not need to be cited and picked up. And we need community control over school safety. That doesn't mean adding police and letting them make the decision. Um, three seconds, and let them make the decision, that means the parents. Because they gave birth to their kids, they raised their kids, they know what to do. Thank you.
John Fang. John Fang followed by Mayusi Monet.
I introduced myself, I reintroduced myself again. My name is John Fang. I'm a youth organizer at Freedom Inc. And it's been a year since I came to this meeting. And yet you all still think that you're also known as cops should be in our schools. If y'all represent the MMSD school district, why are you all choosing to protect these white supremacists than protecting the future of students of color? If you guys think they are there to make schools more safer, why were the reports of black students getting arrested by EROs? Why were there more black students arrested more than white students? Is it because you all feel threatened by black students due to their color of the skin? You all may think that they are educational, well, they are not. Because you all don't understand the struggles they are going through. Struggles such as lack of support from, support from the school, lack of support from the teachers, and even lack of support from the district. That's why their money is better to be invested in students of color. Because they need their money more than you guys. They need their money to survive inside or outside of school. For example, their money can be invested for free bus passes that will last for a year. Their money can be invested for free reduced lunch for students of color who couldn't afford lunch. And their money can be also invested for after-school programs for students of color. So do us a favor. Start saving lives and not destroying lives. Y'all will give students of color a voice, a voice that will achieve them greatness. And it will allow them to reach their goals and dreams. We demand to terminate the contract between MMSD and NPD to invest their money to students of color and let students, parents, and community members have score, have control over school safety.
Thank you. Mayun Ici. Followed by Malte Rus. Sorry, Maddie, Maddie Reese.
Hi, my name is Mayniamoa. I am a community member and advocate to my black and brown community and also a parent to high school students. I am against policing schools because I know how expensive it is to stretch every dollar for my children to be in school. Meaning, eating a good meal at school, transportation, and being involved in after-school activities. And also concerning to me. And always, and I want a safe place for my children to be, to feel safe and wanted in schools. I feel like there are more important issues and more important investments that we should make in our communities than to focus on having our children being policed. Police has never been safe for our black and brown children. If you are okay with having police in school, that means you're okay with ICE detaining a young Mongman. A young Mongman had been picked up this week by ICE. And it has been really traumatizing for the community. Just because of a conviction that he was convicted when he was a youth in high school has ruined his life forever. has ruined his life forever. Having ICE pick him up is the result of having racist police in schools. If you are really about community and making Madison schools a better place, please invest in culturally specific programs, providing good lunches for our children, and transportations, providing counselors and teachers, and stop investing into the prison pipeline. You were elected because we trust that you would make a safe space in schools for our children. And I'm not going to sugarcoat this at all, I just want you to know that if making the choice to vote police out of school is too hard for you, then that means that you should step down. That's all I have for you today.
Maddie, Maddie Reese, followed by Ty Boyd.
My name is Maddie Reese, most of you up here probably know me. I have been beating down Cheatham's door, I have been beating down Matt's door, I have been beating down Alex's door. My son, um, over, last year, at the end of the school year, had a conflict with the MMSD school district. I did a report back June 4th. Their policy says that they have 90 days to get me a decision on this report. I have yet to have gotten a decision. September 4th made it the deadline for my dis, for my report and my discrimination complaint. The school board has agreed with me, not the board, but I'm going to say the head people of this building, has agreed that there has been bias, and my complaint has agreed that my son was done wrong in this complaint, but yet, I have not, I have yet to got a decision on Pryor, who wrote a letter to the, um, detention center, which held my son in detention for over 21 days because they were not sure if he had a school when the, when West High School was his home school. Pryor said that it, that Madison school district did not want my son back, which was false. MMSD did not even know that Pryor had wrote this letter to the juvenile system. So that's how out of tune they are with the juvenile system, which is the police, and the MMSD school system, that's how out of tune they are. For number two, I came down here, I'm here, I'm not going anywhere. Look at this face, I am going to get justice, not just for my son, but for myself and every other's child that looks like me, who has brown skin, because I want to tell you this, I want to tell you this. You, I, you, you, some people up here has agreed that there's prejudice going on in our schools. They know this, people. They agree with this, okay? They know this, but yet they fail to do something about it. It bothers me! It bothers me! I'm serious! Matt, I'm going to beat your door down until you get a decision. Cheatham, I love you, but I'm going to beat your door down until I get a decision. Alex, I am here, I love you, but I'm going to beat your door down until you guys give me a decision on my discrimination complaint that I did back June 4th, okay? For my son. I'm not going anywhere. I don't know who the rest of you are, but you should have a letter that came in your files on Thursday, me telling you, the board, that I have not got a decision. It says in your policy book that if both parties agree, you have the right to have more time to investigate. I am here to tell you, I do not agree, your time is up!
Thank you.
My name is Taya. Taya's school, La Follette High School. Taya attends La Follette High School. Start. You ready? Taya attends La Follette High School. She has an IEP. People with disabilities are not being heard. She was attending a tempor, uh, what was your high school? Your alternative school? New Direction, New Direction closed down. Her parents were not informed that New Direction turned, uh, closed down. She was forced back to La Follette, didn't even know that she was supposed to go to La Follette. No IEP was set up. I had to bust down the school and tell them, open up her IEP, because some things needed to be changed. Guess why they needed to be changed? Because Taya had classes that sent her to McDonald's, to Taco Bell, to the WCA, she was out of the building for every class. Taya said, "Tita, I got an issue with that, I want to be amongst my peers. Why don't I have a math class? Why don't I have a reading class? Why don't I have a gym class?" So me, I go to La Follette, get Matt into the room, open this up, change her schedule. Matt wasn't sure if he could get me an IEP. I knew the law. I knew the law. I knew the law, parents, okay? Matt got us the IEP meeting, and they had about 15 people in the room. I was a little intimidated, but I didn't show them that. Guess what? When, when, when Joanne Grassman, when they got to go over the IEP, Joanne Grassman, she was blown away. How is it that this child is out of, not in an academic class, and she goes to Taco Bell, she does this, she goes to the bar, but she's reading at a third grade level? How? How? Unacceptable! Her math is at a second grade level! How? You know why? Because I learned, I learned this word from Cheatham. It's called a push-out. Push the African-American scoots who have IEPs, who have disabilities, who cause trouble, push them out, keep them out, we don't want them there. But guess what? I am here for every parent. Any parent that don't know their rights, hit me up, I will leave my number. Any parent that needs help, hit me up, who don't know the law, I am ready to fight. The fight is on!
That, uh, that concludes our public appearances, the board will take a short recess.
I have a paper. My name's David.
Uh, it was...
I would like to start by taking a moment to honor the sacred land stolen underneath me. But that, I can't even do today, because I am called forth by the spirit of those that brought me here, not to waste a precious second, because I do not have 400 more years. Do you hear me? I do not have 400 more years. Moreover, I am called by the spirit and the lovely, lovely youth right back here, who just so painstakingly opened themselves vulnerably to you, showed you a bit of who they are at the expense of their social capital. And here you are, hearing what? I could tell you stories of what it's like to be subjected to a man with a gun, an institutionally-supported God complex, and like, a little bit of a bad day, but they've already done that. I could tell you stats and statistics, but in the skin I'm in, my mathematical mastery means nothing to you. So please, hear me when I tell you what I am here to tell you today, which is why I am not in your schools teaching your children, why I don't have my own children in your schools, as somebody that was born here, raised here, and calcated in the values that you all put on your educational materials as you seek office. The reason I am not a teacher is violence. Violence is not abated by the presence of a police officer, it is focused and directed. Violence is not abated by the presence of a police officer, it is focused and directed. We are not discussing whether or not guns will be in school. Quick pop quiz, anyone know how most guns get into schools?
The police.
The police, because what makes an officer? What makes an officer different than any of these cats who haven't made me feel at all uncomfortable? It's the gun that they refuse to take off at meetings where they talk about gunning us down. It is specifically that violence from which they draw their authority and power, not relationships of mentorship. So don't sit here and tell me that we can get guns out of school by bringing guns into school, where do they get the idea that guns solve problems? You send guns when they ask for medical attention, sorry, Tony. You send guns when they, they won't shut up in school. You send guns when they get hurt, you send guns to literally every social problem that you can imagine, send the guns, and they will fix it all for us. And then we wonder how a 17-year-old gets the idea that maybe if I'm not being listened to by the people that I have been spending a year of my life burying my soul to, that maybe I should grab a very large weapon, the largest, most fallic thing I can grab, and spray death upon my classmates as a mercy. They've come here in the method and manner that you have prescribed, and you are not listening. I am still a teacher, you don't want them to learn at my knee. This is your last chance to keep your respect in their eyes. And to you, you hold power, don't let them take it from you. You can author, you can vote, you're your own person. I believe in you.
Thank you, please finish up, thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, five-minute recess, you guys, five minutes, that's it, five-minute recess, five minutes. Five minutes.[1312.54] Announcements and reports. And I'd like to recognize that September is National Suicide Prevention Month. I'd also like to recognize Ricardo Yara in our school district, our MMSD Chief of Staff, who has just named one of Wisconsin's most powerful Latinos. So congratulations, Ricardo. And I'd like to thank the REAP Food Group's Summer Food Program that helped feed many of our students this summer at over fifty sites throughout Dane County. So thank you to the folks at REAP and all their volunteers. With that, I will turn it over to Jan Cheatham for her, for the superintendent's announcements and reports.
Mary, if you could just take a minute while our team approaches the stage and Barb gives me the clicker.
Do you want to give an introduction while people are moving?
I'm going to be introducing them, so I think it'd be best if they were seated, if that's all right, Mary.
Hi.
Go.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm eager to share with you our, oh, sorry. I'm eager to share with you the first superintendent's report of this school year. A little bit about the superintendent's reports this year. My goal, which I'm really excited about, is to use this important time to share with you a few critical highlights related to our work that demonstrate the new strategic framework in action. And I especially want to highlight areas where the Madison School District is serving as a leader, right? Where other school districts are looking to us because of the emergent practice that we're putting into action. So my first presentation tonight with the help of these wonderful people is to highlight our work on mindfulness and MMSD, which really is a demonstration of how you bring humanity into this important work that we do every day, which is something that we've heard a little bit about tonight. I want to introduce the four people who are here tonight. These four represent a group called our Core Mindfulness Team, which is about twenty people strong at this point. The Core Mindfulness Team in our district leads this work, and it's a pretty spectacular bunch. They represent all different kinds of roles in the school district. There are school-based practitioners as well as district-based practitioners, but all people who have stepped up to take on leadership in mindfulness in addition to the duties that they perform every day. So four members of the Core Mindfulness Team are here. Sarah Perrell, who is the lead nurse in our district and the program lead for mindfulness. Thank you, Sarah. We've got Lana Solzphas, who is a restorative justice lead for the school district, restorative practices lead. Sandra Rivera, who is a PBS coach and social worker at Nuestro Mundo. And you all know Andrew Statz pretty well. You probably didn't know that in addition to research and development, he's a core member of our mindfulness team. So we're excited to have all four of them here today, and they're going to tell you a little bit about our work. So I'm going to pass it over to Sarah.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom. It is our duty to win.
Thank you for having us today.
Pull the mic in.
Yeah, you'll have to speak quite closely to it.
Okay.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom.
It is our duty to fight for our freedom.
Just go.
It is our duty to win.
What?
We must love and support one another.
We have nothing to lose, what I say.
We have nothing to lose, what I say. I say, I say.
I think the doors should be shut. The doors should be shut, Jen. Please, they should be shut.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, we're going to continue. We'll use our most, our best mindfulness to focus on this attention.
Absolutely, taking your lead. Thank you so much for having us. We really are honored to be presenting to you an effort that's been underway officially for two years, but really a long history in the district of looking at work that would best support our staff and our students. Our definition of mindfulness in the district is that awareness that arises out of paying attention in a particular way in the present moment without judgment, with as much curiosity and kindness as we can bring to that. And one of the practices we offer in our trainings is actually something called the pause, which actually we've been hearing offered tonight. And the pause we were just given by you, Mary, to take a break, breathe, reset. So this is, this is, this is the practice. This is how we are approaching our work based on a long history of these practices. So we just invite here again maybe twenty seconds of sort of settling into this conversation using our best mindfulness, as Mary has encouraged us, to be here at this table, present with each other for this conversation. Your choice. Yeah. of this program with you. Is this the clicker?
Yep.
Okay. The vision for this program was developed in 2015, and you have a copy of that before you. It's also connected here. And this was developed in concert with our partner at the time, the Center for Healthy Minds, who continues to be a strong partner with us. And the rationale for actually coming up with a, with a vision was to undergird the work that we were already doing through some informal work with the Center for Healthy Minds and our UW Health Mindfulness Program. Knowing that thirty years of evidence from the mindfulness-based stress reduction work undergirding those programs had shown strong evidence for health and well-being, in particular for adults, that idea of increased emotional regulation and awareness, that grounding for bringing awareness to the work that we do. With encouragement, you know, from our senior leadership and in concert with Human Resources as the Employee Wellness Program developed, this became one of the first programs within the Employee Health Program. And it's also connected to our renewed MMSD wellness policy, which I know you've spent time with recently. So a sense of gratitude, I think, not only from this team, but from the participants in our program who have almost universally said, "Thank you," that we can get this kind of support and instruction in our district. So as I said, Human Resources has teamed with Student Services with the funding that many of you have seen in the form of contracts and MOAs coming through this body to form a trainer of trainers program. It was actually, you know, Jen, who said to a group of us, "Could we do this?" There are other people who'd like to come in and do this for us, but could we do this? And we said yes. We started out with seven people. Two years ago, we added seven last year, and we now have new additions to the team. You'll see, that's our team just this weekend in our first training. In addition to Human Resources, we've developed other kinds of supports for staff, including a pretty robust website for the program, which is available at large, you know, not only to our community but to the world. It has a lot of important resources. The, this team really holds the vision. You see that vision statement, and that team really holds that vision not only district-wide but within their schools and departments. You have another handout with you, which is really a listing of the courses that we've developed over the last two years. They're coming around now. I thought they'd made it their way around. We have developed two major courses, the Foundations in Mindfulness course, a ten-hour course offered district-wide. You'll see when you get that handout that over four hundred people have participated in that course. Some of that was a little bit before the last two years, when we were doing some of that work on our own. We also respond to school-based and department-based professional development requests, and those have increased over the last two years, integrated, you know, into the work that schools are doing around well-being and around social-emotional learning. The photo up there you see is our last course in July, and we usually run five to six of those courses a year and about three to four days of mindfulness on Saturdays, and those are attended by thirty to fifty of our staff who come together for that experience after having developed a base in practice. I'm going to hand it over to Sandra at this point to talk a little bit more about our foundations course.
Yes, I'm Sandra Rivera, social worker at Nuestro Mundo Elementary School. And I started doing this work a while back and realized that after fifteen years of, maybe fourteen years of working for the district, I needed a change. I needed to change how I took care of myself, because as a social worker, that's what I do. I care for people. And I love my job. I love, I love my profession. I love being an educator. And I realized that I needed to, to really practice what I preached. And I really dove into mindfulness. As I was deepening my practice, one of the things that came up for me was, "What now?" So I know that this is good for me. I have an established practice, but there is something missing. And I realized that part of me was missing, part of who I am as a Latina, part of me who I am as a Spanish speaker. And I needed to have a community that represented who I was, who I am, to, to be part of this. And so we talked about offering courses in Espanol. I was so excited. It changed my life. And I feel like I can do education now forever. I had plans on becoming a coffee farmer. I still do. But in the meantime, I'm going to keep practicing education, because this can change who we are as educators, to have access to something so important as self-care, to be able to practice with people that are like you, look like you, and speak the same language that you do, that emotional connection to who you are. And so I'm really excited, because we did two courses last year. We did a pilot and we did an actual course, and the feedback was very positive. People want more. They want to be able to access mindfulness. They want to understand what it is. They want to be able to practice with the Spanish-speaking Latino bilingual community. And that's where we're growing here. So I'm really happy about that. I'm happy that we can actually do that, that we can look at what our staff needs, because it's not just for our staff, it's for students, and it's for our families, too. I can bring this to my families when I'm having conversations about difficult topics, and so can my colleagues. And so I'm just excited about being able to grow this. And I just appreciate your understanding of the importance of self-care, because we're here for a really important job, and we're here because we choose to be here. We're here because this is important to us. And I thank you, and thank you for, for really making this a priority.
Thank you. Thanks, Sandra. So you are likely aware that this work is articulated in the new strategic framework, and you see the language there behind you. It lives in the area of investing in people as one of the primary ways that we support staff, the well-being of staff as well as students. And the structures that we use, the opportunities that we use to support staff with this, to explore and to practice mindfulness, that Sarah and Sandra have talked about and that you see on the paper in front of you, as we continue to move into the next few years of this work, we'll continue to look at the needs of our staff and evaluate and modify and adjust as we need to. And I think the story that Sandra shared is a really good example of how we look at the needs and, and continue to move forward and to deepen and expand this work. All right. So as, as you may be aware, there are many benefits of practicing mindful awareness. They include helping us to regulate, to respond well to the realities, the complex realities of our work, to do that in a non-judgmental way, to help our own personal well-being as well as who we are in relation to each other, relationship to each other, to bring more compassion and care to that. One thing that may be a little, little less well-known is that this work is also being associated with the reduction of implicit bias, which is really obviously very important in our work as an anti-racist organization. And connections and integration. There's a lot that could be said about this. I'll just say a little bit. There are, there are deep connections, starting with the beliefs and values that underlie the work of mindfulness, the work of restorative justice, racial justice, social justice, starting with a belief in the inherent worth and value of each human being, each staff person, each student, each family member in our school community. And the circle process, which is the foundational practice within restorative justice, which is racial justice work, the circle process itself is fundamentally a practice of mindful awareness in that it asks us to be present right there in that moment with each other without judgment. And we are continuing to have conversations with our partners in the community as we explore these connections between mindfulness, racial justice, restorative justice, with the recognition that the more we can understand those connections, weave them for people, integrate this work, the more it becomes more than a sum of, they become a sum of their parts, becomes richer, deeper, and more impactful for people.
Just briefly, there's obvious connections to our social-emotional learning focus as a district. So we think about our social-emotional learning standards, and those standards are for our adults as well as for our children. So the mindfulness and MMSD program really offers this, this skill, you know, to our teachers that increases not only their own well-being and emotional regulation, but their ability to actually be present, perhaps differently or in a, in a, in a way that is connected to students, that supports their own social-emotional learning. So we know that the well-being of the adult in the, in the classroom and in our schools is intimately connected to the social-emotional well-being and learning of the child. So these are some, the photo on the left there is actually Ali Smith from the Holistic Life Foundation, who's worked in three of our schools over the years through foundations grants to support the learning of not only children, but the staff and teachers in the building around mindfulness and mindful awareness.
Then I get to talk about our next steps, and I'll give you an idea of where we're at, let you know where we're going, so.
I was wondering why you were up here.
This is not my typical role, so I'm embracing this, I'm enjoying this.
Yeah, it's part of the team.
Yeah, it's important to recognize, like a lot of things we talk about in education, it's difficult to do this work alone. So two things I want to highlight. One is our ability to bring staff together. So there, I want to call back to this document. These are a lot of opportunities for our staff to connect, to help each other deepen their understanding and options for practice, and to re-energize around some of this very important work. So happy to be part of the team that identifies those opportunities and makes those available to staff for those connections. Also, the connections that we have with the, with the MMSD community, all of this, very happy to say, appeals to me, research-based practice. The partnership I want to call in particular is the Center for Healthy Minds and their subsidiary, then Healthy Minds Innovation. So we have the opportunity to pilot with fifty MMSD staff and teachers, one of four modules in, in an online app that's aimed at promoting well-being. So the very first module focusing in on awareness with a kickoff with in-person seminars, with the app itself, with the opportunity to provide feedback. It's a terrific opportunity for us to see what that can do for us and provide some guidance for that development as it would apply to a school district. So keep an eye out on that. That's going to be available, it's a five-week run for the pilot, and that'll start in November. So we've got some, some cool things ahead.
We'll tilt this in, and then we'll have a few minutes for questions.
Yeah, thank you. Sarah?
And we're done. This is our final slide. Some of you may know Parker Palmer's work. He's actually a Madison resident, deep work in, in the field of education, and I'll, I'll just leave that up there for your reading, that we're, we're really seeing those connections in so many ways between the fact that self-care is not a selfish act. It's really not only for the benefit of that individual, but for all the lives that we touch. So we're, we're again just expressing not only a celebration of what's really been a very fruitful two years of expansion, development and expansion, but just gratitude for the support that's been there to make this happen.
Great. Well, thank you so much for the work, and we'll just take a few minutes for questions. I hope you understand that it's been a long night.
One, I absolutely love this. Having been just entering into meditation myself recently, I think this is very interesting because it is research-based, which is one. But my other question is, do we have sign interpreters or, or ways to teach individuals with disabilities this work? And is there a way to do that?
We don't in our program. I, I love the question. Thank you for asking it. We've been doing a lot of conversation in the community around accessibility relative to culture, you know, mindfulness for who, well-being for who, and we're working with communities of color in the, in the, in Dane County, really, to, to, to address that more completely. But that is a new question, and I really appreciate it. And we'll let you know what we find out.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Dean?
Yeah, I'm interested in the connection that you're doing with the mindfulness and the restorative justice stuff, or the children, the students that are involved in the restorative justice circles, actually getting the training in mindfulness to, as they're involved in this. I know the leaders get some, some RJ training. Are they also getting the mindfulness training? When did that start?
Yeah, that's another new question. At this point, the students who've been, who are being trained, to my knowledge, are not receiving explicit training in mindfulness. But there are many times that mindful awareness practices are built into a circle process. I mentioned how the circle itself can be a practice, but there are also mindfulness processes built into the circle. So it's embedded, but in terms of actually teaching mindfulness as we teach restorative justice and restorative practices, I think that could be, that could point us towards some new steps, so thank you.
The fusion of mindfulness and restorative practices is sort of a national conversation right now, and we're actually lucky to have somebody coming to Madison, October 12th, Rhonda McGee, who's sort of a national thinker and practitioner around this. And we'll make sure you have that information if you're interested. It's a public talk on that Friday evening. It's a public talk on that Friday evening where you'll sort of see that issue kind of laid out there pretty explicitly.
Yeah, we can share that with you.
That would be great. Kate, and then TJ.
Thank you for being here and for your leadership on wellness. I think it's fantastic for the district, so appreciate all of the time that you guys have spent on this. I think my question is more of just a request, maybe. I would love to hear at some point your thoughts on if we were to really expand the practice and teaching of mindfulness with our young people, what would that, what could that look like? Kind of just no-holds-bar kind of question for innovation for our district. What could that look like? What would it take to make it happen? You have, obviously, a wealth of experience, but also other jobs, and so what, you know, what's possible, I guess, there for really bringing this into the kind of education in the schools?
Yeah, if you'll, that's just.
We don't want to do it now, but just.
Right. It's a wonderful question, and we'd love to come back and talk about that. I think just pointing to the vision, that the decision to really invest in staff up front with the practice and the embodiment of that practice by staff, their sort of nervous system showing up in the classroom, being the number-one intervention that would benefit students, and then the teaching of the practices beyond that. So definitely a direction that's actually happening in some schools and that we have thought about and have guidance for and to be, more to be said.
Yeah, we certainly follow up on that. Okay, TJ.
Thank you again for coming, and thank you for the work. And just kind of organizational question, that things come from there and then they live there, and I guess that, I'm curious about human resources and student services being the two homes for this, and not professional development, professional learning. And I guess that kind of your thoughts on, I mean, clearly it's a, you have happy homes for it now, but what would it look like to add another home, or to, you know, move part of the house?
We collaborate really closely with Sue Gordon, professional development, actually just worked with her this summer to infuse this kind of learning in A Day for Principals during the Leadership Institute. So it's very much unsiloed and collaborative, and Sue is at the table with us on this work.
I guess the other implication always at this table is, what is the budgetary implication of having these two homes instead of that home also is something to be considered.
Okay, so Gloria or James, if you, great. Thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, as we move on, we will be moving into the reports from the work groups. There was no instruction work group meeting in September. The next meeting is October 1st, and the items on the agenda are review of the instruction work group 2018-19 calendar, early childhood updates, and board cycles of review and scaling. And so we move on to operations work group, and Kate, an update on what happened this month?
Yep, so we covered three topics this month. The first was a review of the calendar for this coming academic year in terms of our own kind of internal agenda. The second, we will be an action item for tonight, which is the annual cash flow borrowing. Just gave us some insight into how much that was going to be, and we'll speak to it in just a couple of minutes. And that really is just funding to get us through the fall when our revenues don't match up quite with our expenditures. And then the last was, the first time we've heard from Jacob from MSCR, it was a view into some of his early insights into what MSCR does, and a little sneak peek, maybe, or at least the start of a conversation around what it can be for part of the district. So, and that was very much due to Dean's leadership and push to bring that to the table, so thank you. The next meeting is the 22nd of October. We have three items on the agenda. The first is closing down this year's budget. The second is review of the school safety plan, and then the third will sort of start up the conversation into next year's budget, which is around principal pay.
Okay, thank you, Kate. And with that, we proceed to the action items that went through work group, and the only action item we have is around the borrowing, as Kate had mentioned. So Kelly was at the operations work group. She explained that we have short-term borrowing that we utilize in order to match our expenses with, or bridge that timing between our expenses and when we get most of our revenue off, from property taxes. So that was put out for bid results today, and so I will move that the Board of Education award the low bidder for the tax revenue anticipation note to Morgan Stanley for a total of $69 million at a net interest cost of $1,259,020. Okay, any discussion?
Good numbers.
Okay. And so, Ahmad, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. And with that, we move on to consent agenda, and so I will move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all the motions set forth in Section 10 of the electronic agenda prepared for the September 24th, 2018 regular school board meeting. Exactly as said, motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby, subject to any express separations that have been made by any member of the school board. So, okay, we have a second. Are there any separations? TJ?
I don't have any separations, but it's less, there's three or four that I just want to make quick comments on. It's less time-consuming to do those as comments instead of separation.
Can we do the separate?
I will. I just want to tell you as chair that I would ask before we vote to make those comments.
Thank you. Any other separations? I am going to separate 10-10, the Avid TOPS partnership evaluation for reasons of, to avoid any conflict of interest. So TJ, why don't we move into your items?
Yeah, very, very quick comments. There's one big theme in these comments, and actually 10-10, the Avid evaluation is part of that, is the theme of evaluation. I see 10-6 here, the renewal of circles of support, which I'm really glad to see, but I would also like to see how that's going. And we have the Avid evaluation and the tutoring evaluation, and those are reminders that both Avid and Schools of Hope tutoring three-year renewals are up this year, and so kind of emphasize the evaluation piece there. The National Equity Project work, today I asked for an update on the metrics around that. And so just kind of using this as, and I think also as we come to look at both the Time Bank and my WCA work with restorative practices and restorative things, to keep an eye on those partnerships and what kind of metrics and evaluation. And, you know, I support all of these, and I also support improvement in all of these. And so I guess that, and then evaluation is the way to it. So that's the big theme.
Okay, thank you, TJ. So with that, is there any further discussion? So Ahmad, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. So then with regard to 10-10, James, you want to take that?
Yeah, I move that the Board of Education approve an expenditure to W C E R on the behalf of Hope Lab for the provision of 50% of the Avid TOPS evaluation at a cost not to exceed $30,000 with funding from the 2018-19 Avid operating budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Ahmad, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries, seven-zero.
Six-zero-one.
Six-zero-one. Back to you, Mary.
Okay, thank you. James, and we are on to other reports to the board. I see that there was not a City of Education meeting this.
We lacked one.
Okay, so none this month. Next one scheduled for October 10th. Okay, Ahmad, Student Senate?
Yes, we had our first meeting of the school year a few weeks ago. I want to thank Nikki and Gloria for being there, and for also going over some of these summer board issues and explaining that to the student senators, which included the strategic framework, our budget, the issue of EROs in schools, and the behavior education plan. And then we also went over what Student Senate is, our recruitment strategies, and major goals for the upcoming school year. So our next meeting will be this Wednesday, actually. We'll have two in October as well.
And unfortunately, due to the conflict I made over two months ago, I cannot be there, but Gloria will be there.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Nikki. So thanks, Ahmad. And with that, then on to Dean with a report from the ERO ad hoc committee.
Yeah, you've got the report, and I really urge you all to read it. There are appendices that lists all the, some of the meetings, the people that were on the committee, and the report itself is very well-done. It's only six pages, but it's important. And there are several things I kind of like to point out that are in the report, and one is that there's just a couple statements in there that talk about having a healthy relationship between MMSD, MPD, and families of our students. That really is the operational imperative of what this report was about. Another statement in the report talks about the way we need to understand the role of community stressors in impacting student well-being. We had some over the weekend. We have things daily, almost, that impact our students that happen outside of what happens in school, and we have to be aware of all these things. And so if this was just a simple question about what we do in school, without that context, we make a mistake. We need to understand the role of what the ERO is in the context of how it fits in with our entire community. And I think this report, and all the people on the committee understood that, and it's there to you. We will have a meeting on Wednesday, and we will end our time together and come up with the, there might be some changes to this. So we will shoot to finish on Wednesday, and then we can give Jen the go-ahead on going after negotiating what comes next.
Okay, thanks very much, Dean, and thank you to the committee members, TJ, for their work. Jen, are we confirmed for a special meeting?
We are.
To receive the report?
Yep, October 8th is the date that we've set for a special meeting to receive the report for members of the committee, and your opportunity to ask questions and discuss it.
Yeah, so we look forward to meeting other members of the committee, receiving that report, and moving forward with the work. And Gloria, the, oh, sorry, James, go ahead.
Are we allowed to ask a quick question?
Sure.
The appendix, there's quite a bit of there. So what's the goal behind the structure there? Is that just a lot of references that we need to look at to get background that you looked at? Can you just elaborate real quickly on what that's about?
It's more the second part. We looked at a lot of things, and we wanted you all to see that this just, we just didn't have discussions. We did research on a lot of things and brought it to, and we thought that it was important that you see in there and that you review some of it, and have that to also help you inform your own decision. Got any?
Yeah, I have two things. Number one is, the bibliography is still a work in progress. Barb and I are trying to find the time to finish that, because we did, as Dean said, look at a lot of things, both subcommittees and the committee. I think that, you know, you've been following this, you attended a couple meetings, you've been exposed to things as a board member on different thinking and different sources of thinking on this, and I think you can follow along the path that the committee took through the main body of the report. But there's a lot of people in the community and a lot of people in the media who haven't been following that story. And so I think that this is to say, you know, where did this come from? Well, you know, it didn't just come from a bunch of people sitting around a table. We talked to people, we listened to people, we read stuff, we talked to people again, and we listened to each other. And so I think that it, I think for, certainly, you know, to satisfy your curiosity, go for it, but it's mostly for those people who've been at a distance from this process. And again, you know, you showed up at three or four meetings, I know, and we've had conversations. So it's there to show that, you know, that we're not making stuff up, too.
Okay.
Just maybe to follow on, I mean, is it possible to have some of that documentation included, or at least the pieces that you would really highlight? So that, I mean, these aren't all linked to information right now, so.
The bibliography will all be linked. The bibliography itself is, everything in the bibliography.
Last I checked, Barb?
Everything in there. And so that's the one place where I've made, not, that's not in the, the meeting materials can be found on board docs, but the other stuff in the bibliography will all be linked, and that's why it's taken a little bit of time to get it done, and that also because just there's other things going on in the world. But certainly by the time this comes, I guess probably by Wednesday, I'm going to have to get this done.
Thank you, TJ. Dean, we appreciate the work. And so Gloria, the Student Behavior Ad Hoc Committee report?
Sure, our last meeting, we heard, we're moving through our case studies.
Yep.
We're on time, and.
Gloria, can you speak into your mic, please?
We heard from two schools, so we're on time. We heard from two schools. We heard from East High School and Wright Middle School. And so we're going to continue those case studies as we move along. We're seeing some really common themes between schools on, you know, what's working, what's not, what kind of resources they need. So we'll have all that information to you at the end. But our next meeting is scheduled for October 8th, and we will hear from some other schools at that time.
Okay, thank you, Gloria, and the other board members who are serving on that committee. It's awfully important. So we have no old or new business for this meeting, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
Oh, Ahmad, your advisory vote? Any opposed?
It was over by you.
We are adjourned.